Damn. It doesn't need to lose.
Peace and welcome to the culture right here on the Black Star Network. I'm your host Faraji Muhammad. Thank you so much for tuning in and being a part of the conversation, folks. It's Wednesday, so we got to check in with our very own Dr. Gerald Horn with the Horn Report to talk about everything that's happening in Ukraine, talking about the LA City Council, and so much more. We'll have those conversations. Also, I'm going to be checking in and talking about how to take your fashion designer, how one fashion designer is taking design to the next level. We'll be talking to Patrick Cupid about some of the things that he's doing and so much more. So folks, stay tuned. We got a lot coming at you on today's edition of the culture. Make sure y'all keep screaming at us. Streaming, streaming right there at blackstarnetwork.com. Stay with us. We got, we're coming right back. Folks, welcome to the culture right here on the Black Star Network. I'm your host Faraji Muhammad. Thank you so much for tuning in and being a part of conversation as we are screaming live right now on blackstarnetwork.com. I'm your host Faraji Muhammad, and so excited to have these conversations with you. We got some dynamic guests that are coming up. But first and foremost, y'all know how we do. It is Wednesday, and so we gotta get some insight. We gotta get some analysis, and we gotta do our nat, our weekly check-in with the professor of history and African-American studies from the University of Houston to get today's Horn Report. Let's go. Peace, Dr. Gerald Horn. How are you today, sir?
It's all good. What about you?
I'm good. I am good. We got so much to talk about, Dr. Horn, so let's jump right in. First and foremost, let's talk about some of the national stuff, the international stuff, and then we'll talk about some of the national stuff. The international stuff is what we're seeing in Ukraine. Of course, there has been some big developments in this war that Russia has waged against Ukraine. The big development that has come up over the past week has been the bombing of that bridge that that serves as a pipeline for Russian supplies during this whole war effort in Crimea. And the bombing of that, that has been a huge strategic bombing. And I, the last that I heard, Dr. Horn, Ukraine did not take full responsibility for that bombing, but they did not also deny that they did the bombing as well. So what was that? And then, and as a result of that, we saw, of course, President Putin respond saying, "We're going to do strikes, missile strikes all over Ukraine at this point," that it's going to keep coming. The flurry of stelling is going to come. Now, this has opened the door, of course, to his impatience, his anger, his frustration, and he has even has stepped up his rhetoric, has not turned down the talk about use of nuclear weapons. And America is now preparing for the, for what may happen, whereas they're asking the big question in the White House, you know, "How close are we to Armageddon?" And this is a big question. This is Biden's Armageddon Nuclear Warning Bills, and increasingly, where is there about a desperate Putin? And, and this is, this is, this is, this is not looking good at all. You've been talking about it. We have been discussing it. But first and foremost, let's talk a little bit about this bridge bombing and then a response to that. What, what, what is, what can we expect now, Dr. Horn, to happen over these next few days in Ukraine? Because we already saw that there were some missile strikes in Kiev, the, the capital. So what can we expect?
It was a very dangerous turn of events, this bombing of the bridge. I should say parenthetically that those who are interested in military tactics should have to take away that it's more than a notion to bring down a well-constructed bridge, because that bridge was up and running virtually unscathed about 24 hours later. But in any case, as you suggest, Moscow took that as an opportunity to escalate in a way we have not seen since this so-called special military operation began in February 2022. I think that Mr. Biden needs to cool his jets with all of this talk about Armageddon, that is to say, the end of the world. In fact, President Macron of France explicitly reprimanded him for doing so. And by the way, another epical event of the past few days is that President Macron of France called together European nations, did not invite the United States, not invite Russia either, for that matter, because I think the Europeans are beginning to suspect, particularly in France, that they're on a runaway train, and they have no influence over the conductors. And so they're dealing with a energy crisis. You know that Mr. Macron has started wearing turtlenecks nowadays. He's trying to popularize them as France and Western Europe about to go into a bitter winter. And your audience should also recognize that there is a principle in the Pentagon, the US military, enunciated by the late Pentagon chief Dom Rumsfeld, that if you have a problem, the way to deal with it is to enlarge it. Now, don't try that at home. If you have a problem with your partner or spouse, don't try to enlarge it. That's the sort of blinkered thinking that you see in Washington DC. And so don't be surprised if this war spreads to the Moscow ally that is Belarus. Don't be surprised if other nations such as Cyprus are dragged into this conflict. You know that the Ukrainian Foreign Minister was just in Africa. As we speak, there's a vote at the United Nations about this Russian operation in Ukraine, where Washington has been twisting arms of African leaders to get them to sign on. They'll probably be punished and pulverized if they do not sign on. So this crisis does not show any signs of abating or being diluted, and that is utterly dangerous.
Yeah, to say utterly dangerous is, is, is saying it lightly. This, this is, and, and we've been saying this, Doc, you know, never, anytime two nations go to war, and I know they have war plans, war strategies, but it's almost like making mockery of, of, of something that is inevitable, which is war does not go according to a plan. There is no quote-unquote certainty in war, right? I think Putin, I think President Putin thought that, and, and I heard the president, President Biden, say this, that he probably thought, oh, Putin thought that he can pretty much invade Ukraine, and he didn't expect them to fight back. Like, all of this is so uncertain. So now, you know, months into this conflict, we're really in uncharted territory. We're really in uncharted territory. I think that there was this idea, and, and you, you tell me, you know, your thoughts on this, but I think there was this idea that this was going to end very quickly. And now we're seeing that it's not ending. You, you've been telling us that in everything from resources to gas to oil to, to grain, we want, I want to get your take on what's happening in Africa. All of these things are being affected, but the one main part that is staying constant in this whole situation is Putin's decision to stay involved in this conflict. And so all of these other things are happening. Everybody else is changing their plan, but Putin is still moving forward and saying, "No, I'm, I'm, we're going to keep moving. We're going to keep marching forward." And I don't know how any war plan, any war strategy takes that into account. How do you prepare for something like that?
Well, you know, I did a book on boxing a few years ago, and you're probably familiar with a statement from Mike Tyson, where he says that everybody has a plan when they get into the ring until they get hit in the face. After they get hit in the face, the plan goes out the window. And I think that this is an apt description of what's taking place in the battlefield in Ukraine. I think to begin with, the Moscow plan underestimated the fighting metal of the Ukrainians, which led to a Ukrainian offensive in August a few months ago. And I think overall, the United States and its allies have underestimated the impact of Russia on the global economy in terms of grain exports, in terms of energy exports, et cetera. You know that the late Senator John McCain of Arizona, former GOP presidential nominee, was famous, if not infamous, for suggesting that Russia was just a gas station masquerading as a great nation. And that was part of the underestimation, not only of Russia, but the assistance that it would get from China. Because I think that after the dust clears, what we're going to find out is that Russia has been able to stand up for oh-so-many months because of under-the-table and on-top-of-the-table assistance from the People's Republic of China.
And, and let's talk about, let's talk about, as you've been talking about China, I mean, there has been other nations, other continents that are not in, in cahoots with the United States on this whole process. Africa, you know, I know that's, that's something that, you know, you, you have often kept our eyes on. What is going on with African nations now where, where they're not in lockstep with the United States, even though the US Secretary, well, no, the US Representative to the UN has been trying to get Africa on board. President Biden has actually is having trouble, and King, if you want to show that, he's scrambling to avert cracks in the pro-Ukraine coalition. And one of the groups that he's reached out to, it says it in this article, "He has held hours of conversations in recent months with Indian Prime Minister Narendra Modi, South African President Cyril Ramafosa, and other foreign leaders who have not always supported the Western coalition in support of Ukraine, urging them to stand firm against Russian President Vladimir Putin." Why isn't Africa a little bit hesitant about this? And I also read, Dr. Horn, that Africa is still being inundated with a lot of quote-unquote Russian propaganda around this war that they have not weeded out from their media outlets and information stations. So, so, so where, where does Africa stand on this?
Well, I think Africa is trying to be neutral, and I think we'll get an idea of how that's faring by the end of the day. Because as we speak, there is a vote taking place that the United Nations General Assembly, that Washington has pushed this resolution seeking to denounce and castigate Russia. I expect a number of abstentions, basically votes to say that Africa is neutral, because I think that Africa feels that if it signs on wholly with the North Atlantic countries laid by the United States, it could alienate China. And if you look at major infrastructure, there's to say building of airports, roads, highways, stadiums, major skyscrapers, et cetera, that capital mostly comes from China. And so Washington, excuse me, Africa does not want to alienate the People's Republic of China. But if you look at issues like education and healthcare in particular, that aid oftentimes comes from the United States of America. So there's no incentive for African nations to alienate either bloc. Their incentive is to try to remain neutral and keep their heads down and keep getting paid by both sides.
Is that wise?
I think so, because I don't, I don't, there's a lot of downside to alienating China right now. And there's downside to alienating the United States of American and its allies right now.
Right, right, right.
I, I think that their policy, and keep in mind too, that historians have instructed us, not necessarily including myself, that it was a mistake for African nations to take a partisan position during the Cold War conflict of decades between Moscow and Washington. Now, some of the same people who made that kind of analysis have reversed field and are suggesting that now Africa should take a partisan position. I don't buy it.
And, 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 you know, just very quickly, you know, what, what, what is, what is the sentiment of Africans here in the United States? I mean, do they just, you know, we, we, we are a country where a lot of African brothers and sisters find refuge, find a home here in the United States, right? In, in cities across this country. So is this war or is this struggle on the African, and I won't want to use the term African-American, but you know what I mean? It's like, is for the African community in America, is this something that, that they are concerned about?
I think so, but I would suspect, although I haven't done a poll, that Africans resident in the United States are probably taking positions, positions that echo that of the Congressional Black Caucus. And as you know, the Congressional Black Caucus is all in with regard, with regard to supporting the US position on Ukraine. In fact, we've talked on your program, as you know, about the bill carried by Congressman Gregory Meeks of Southeast Queens, a leading member of the Congressional Black Caucus, the chairman of the House Foreign Affairs Committee, which calls upon the State Department to penalize and sanction African states that do not go along with the US position. And I suspect that many Africans who oftentimes assimilate into African-American culture, certainly not all, I suspect that they're following the lead of Congressional Black Caucus.
That's all I'm gonna say to that, Doc. Taylor, Taylor checked it, Doc, and said, "Africa doesn't want any enemies. Bring on the money. Bring on the money. Show me the money." That's what, you want our support? Show us the money. Show us, and you'll get some support. That's going to be, that is very interesting. All right, let's bring it right here home, Doc, because this is, this is in your neck of the woods where we're seeing a conflict, a conflagration of politics, racism, backdoor dealing, and, and a high level of mistrust in the government here. We, we, we can talk about other nations, but America got a real problem in government right now. Looking at the saga around the LA City Council, you know, when, when I heard this, take a look, folks. Now that we know Nuri Martinez, who is the former city council president, she has resigned. Ron Herrera, who is in charge, who was the former head of the Labor Federation, he has stepped down. The only two left are Kevin DeLeon, the city councilman in Los Angeles City, and Gil Sedillo. These individuals still have not decided to resign. As to why, I don't know. But here's the thing. This thing is going, I mean, this is, this is hitting all types of high levels. Of course, President Biden weighed in on this matter yesterday as well. But when we look at this, and I, and I want to make sure, I want to bring up my notes on this, because the question is that has been asked, can they be removed? And this is what the LA Times shared when they, when this question is asked. Take a look at this, folks. The LA Times reported, when, can these LA council members be removed? The short answer is no. The city charter has a provision for council members to suspend an elected officer only if they are awaiting trial in criminal proceedings, as was the case with former councilman Jose Huzar and suspended councilman member Martin Ridley Thomas. According to the LA City Charter, there are rare situations in which a council member is removed, but it's unlikely that any could apply in this scenario. Short of them resigning, a recall election would likely be the only way to remove Martinez or DeLeon from office. Sedillo does not have enough time left on his term to qualify for recall proceedings, according to city rules. He's actually, Sedillo is, he's planning to, I think he has to leave office by December anyway. So he's still there. Martinez is left. DeLeon, DeLeon, he's, you know, it's still a big question mark. What do we make of this? This is madness right now.
It's a very unfortunate turn of events. Nuri Martinez, the major culprit, the former president of the LA City Council, spoke of a black child as being a quote "little monkey," although she used the Spanish phrase for that. She's spoken very hostile and disparaging terms towards people south of the border from her ancestral homeland, speaking of Mexico, referring in an ugly way to people from Oaxaca in Mexico. She made disparaging comments about Armenians, who are a major voting bloc in California, in Southern California specifically, Jewish Americans as well.
That's the one, Doc.
She was forced to step down from the city council presidency. I expect her to be followed by these other persons. But what you should focus on is that Ron Herrera, who was also Latino, was in on the conversation, did not object to the ugliness. He stepped down as president of the labor movement, the County Federation of Labor in Los Angeles. He has been replaced on an interim level by a leader of a gangster-influenced union. Speaking of the Hollywood unions and the television unions, if you look at who's behind the camera in terms of all these cultural products, they're mostly members of the International Alliance of Theatrical and Stage Employees, which for decades has been dominated by organized crime. So when I see that kind of coup that has taken place, it makes me quite suspicious, because I'm not a coincidence theorist. I don't think that necessarily all of these are coincidences, the fact that somehow Ron Herrera, who was actually fairly progressive, gets replaced by somebody to his right. And plus, you need to realize that what's happening in Los Angeles is a microcosm of what's happening nationally. There is a shift to the right. We, we're going to see this, I'm afraid to say, with regard to these elections. Midterm congressional elections determine who controls the House and the Senate in a few weeks. We talked last week about Herschel Walker, who's still in a neck-and-neck race to be the next US senator from Georgia, because he's backed by the ultra-right. This is also a global trend. We see the rise in Italy of fascists. We thought we had gotten rid of fascists by the end of World War II in 1945. They begun to raise their ugly heads. You see the same thing in Sweden, which we thought was some sort of bastion of social democracy, but the fascists are on the march there, and you see it locally in Los Angeles. And so we have a real problem in, in this country and in this world. I think that in order to dig ourselves out of this deep hole in which we find ourselves, that is to say, I salute the protesters at the LA City Council, who are hectoring and shouting and screaming at the council members. But at a certain point, we're going to have to try to come up with some sort of way to dig ourselves out of this crisis. And I think one way possibly to emerge from this predicament stronger than we were before is to ask for mediation by the president of Mexico. After all, the alleged culprits are all Mexican-Americans. When a US national gets in trouble in Iran, the president of the United States speaks out. You had a member of the LA City Council who speaks disparagingly about people from Mexico in her city. The president of Mexico has a basis for getting involved, and you should also know that Martin Luther King III has taken a historic interest in Mexico. He's friendly with the president of Mexico. In fact, I end my book on Texas with a vignette of them huddling together. So I think what we really need is some out-of-the-box thinking, because this is a major crisis that is disrupting many lives. I haven't even mentioned the sheriff of LA County, Mr. Villanueva, who's on the record of putting a bullseye on every black person in LA. He says that anti-Asian violence in Southern California and in California generally is perpetrated by young black men. That's like putting a bullseye on our backs. It's like trying to get China mad at us. You know, we got enough problems. And so this is a real crisis.
So, 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 I mean, you, you pointed out two things, and I think they, they need to be discussed. One is, you know, getting some level of mediation, because we had Dr. Tanya Hernandez on the show yesterday from Fordham University, and I'm talking about, you know, how do we bridge this gap between black and brown communities? And, and she mentioned that there had to be some racial literacy that had to be done. And, and, you know, by LA having such a very, very, a long history of racism, of black and brown. First and foremost, I'm blown away that Nuri Martinez was even allowed to be in public office for this long, given the fact of her views, right? But I do feel like along with that racial literacy, there needs to be something else, because this is going to be a problem. And, and this is a problem, you know, Latinos make up about 22% of LA city. White people are make up about 48 to 49%. Black folks, we make up 8%. Asians make up 11. Then you have other communities that make up the final, the final part of that. So we're looking at a situation here where black folks don't really have the numbers, and we need to figure out, well, how do we still have the power? How do we still get the representation? So this idea of talking to the president of Mexico, bringing him into this conversation, it needs to be had, because my great concern about this is looking at the next generation, Dr. Horn. It's like, how does the next generation of Latinos, and how does the next generation that's coming after, you know, that are the children of, of a Nuri Martinez, right? That are the children of those she offended. How are they going to grow up in a city like, and what is there going to be their personal politics? How are they going to understand race? How are they going to understand that LA being, the way it's constructed and, and laid out, you got black and brown every other house? You know what I mean? We're all in the same community. So how do we make that? So that's, that's my concern. It's like, okay, if something, and I'm saying something dramatic, it can't be a press release. It can't be an apology statement. There has to be some dramatic efforts that need to be made to ensure that both of these communities understand, like, look, we are all oppressed. You know, I put it on my Twitter. My Twitter, I tweeted out, Doc, I said, "When black and brown fight, white supremacy wins." At this point, something dramatic has to happen. And, and I know that this is a very, very, this is a black eye on the years of work that many black folks and folks from the Latino community, those who have worked on the ground to build those coalitions, to build those relationships. It's a huge black eye to those efforts. So I, I'm trying to think, I'm like, you know, what, what, what do we do? As, as, as black Angelenos, as Latino Angelenos, and even as folks outside of the LA County, LA city area, what can everyday folks do?
Where everyday folks are oftentimes members of unions. And that's why, A, it was important that Ron Herrera, the leader of LA Unions, was the first person to step down. And that's why, B, it's very important to get the interim leader, who as noted is a representative of a gangster gym-pro union, to step back. We should also encourage the Service Employees International Union, which has a substantial black and brown membership, is heavily represented in the corridors of power of labor. We need to get the SEIU, which also has branches from the Atlantic to the Pacific, to get more heavily involved. Because as you suggested, this is a crisis that will fester, not least because it's being nourished by national and global trends. We know, for example, that due north in San Francisco, you had a kind of coup that led to the ouster of a progressive prosecutor. to the ouster of a progressive prosecutor, Chesa Boudin, in his replacement by a lock them up and throw away the key prosecutor. They tried to do the same thing in L.A. County with George Gascón, and you might have noticed that Nuri Martinez also threw brick bats at George Gascón. Uh, he's of Cuban origin, and she said something like, "He's with the blacks," quote-unquote.
Right, right.
And that's led to this new t-shirt, "I'm With The Blacks," that you might have seen all of the protesters, which, by the way, included a significant percentage of Mexican-American youth. That's very significant, and it's a foundation on which we can build.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and very quickly, uh, Dr. Horn, what, what, what do you make of? And, and I think part, I think I may know the answer to this question, but I'm still, I'm still opposed to question to you so that our, our audience can, can understand. Why do you think President Biden decided to weigh in on a city council affair from a federal, national level? I mean, this was Corrine Jean-Pierre, who is his White House spokesperson. She said it from the national White House podium. The President is glad to see that one of the participants in that conversation has resigned, but they all should call in the language recorded during the conversation unacceptable and appalling. Why do you, why do you think that she and the President, uh, put out a word about a city council affair?
Well, I think it was an easy score for the White House. Uh, that is to say that Mr. Biden knows more than most that he was heavily dependent upon the black vote, which catapulted him into the White House. There are many black voters who are disappointed with his performance thus far, justifiably and understandably. At the same time, if he attacks white racism, that will get him into hot water with a powerful voting bloc. And so, it's easier and more convenient to attack racism coming from the Mexican-American community. So, I hope that doesn't sound overly cynical, but that's my take.
And I'm glad that you, you, you shared that. Dr. Gerald Horn, who is the Moore's Professorship of, uh, Moore's Professor of History and African-American Studies at the University of Houston, you can see him each and every Wednesday, um, here on The Culture for the Horn Report. Dr. Horn, always a pleasure. Uh, next week, Doc, I'm gonna just let you know right now, next week, I gotta talk to you about something that I've grown, that I'm seeing happening, which is there are a huge number of election deniers who are actually on the ballot across this country. When I say huge folks, I'm talking about literally over 300. I'm gonna share with y'all, I'm telling you, I gotta get Dr. Horn's thoughts on this. Like, what we're seeing in this midterm election, as you talk about all of the, the trends of racism and fascism, these election deniers are actually on the ballot in high-ranking positions in states across this country where they could continue to spew their lies, their falsehoods, and dictate the narrative to possibly win elections to serve the quote-unquote "general public." Doc, we gotta talk about that. We have to talk about it. Dr. Gerald Horn, thank you, sir. It's always a pleasure to have you on the show.
Thank you.
All right, folks. Yes, sir. Uh, folks, we gotta take a quick pause. When we come forward, let's continue the conversation about this L.A. City Council situation because it was also, you know, I want to get your take on, what do you think of President Biden's decision on getting involved in a city council matter? Do you think, and I'm asking the question, do you think it was a wise decision for him to speak out on this situation? Now, I'm gonna share with you what I think politically, why he decided to say something, but I want to get your take on this as well. Plus, I gotta share with you, as folks are looking and hearing the audio, you know, you heard Dr. Horn say, "Nuri Martinez went for everybody." When she went for everybody. And so, it was just reported, the L.A. Times and other outlets, she attacked Jews, she spoke about Armenians. Folks, y'all, if you've never been to Southern California, you understand the dynamics of power. There was a two powerful groups in Southern California. So, we're seeing something here. We're seeing something. And again, our Latino, the Latino community, our Latino brothers and sisters only make up about 22%, but that's 14% more than what we make in, in L.A. So, there, there is, there is something that has to be done, but I want to get your take on this latest set of developments. Do you think President Biden's involvement in this whole situation was a wise decision for the president and the wise decision for the Democrats? Stay with us, join us in the conversation, post your comments on our Facebook page, and of course, on our YouTube page, and keep streaming us live on BlackStarNetwork.com. We gotta take a quick pause. When we come forward, that discussion is up next, so stay with us. It's The Culture here on the Black Star Network.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene, a white nationalist rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their damn minds.
An angry pro-Trump mob storms the U.S. Capitol with some shots.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance.
We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at Emory University calls white rage as a backlash.
This is the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking our women, this is white fear.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
When you talk about blackness and what happens in black culture, we're about covering these things that matter to us, speaking to our issues and concerns.
This is a genuine people-powered movement.
We've got a lot of stuff that we're not getting, you get it, and you spread the word.
We wish to plead our own cause, too long have others spoken for us.
We cannot tell our own story if we can't pay for it.
This is about, uh, covering us.
Invest in black-owned media.
Your dollars matter.
We don't have to keep asking them to cover our stuff.
So, please, support us in what we do, folks.
We want to hit 2,000 people, $50 this month, raise $100,000.
We're behind 100,000, so we want to hit that.
Y'all money makes this possible.
Check some money orders, go to Peel Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196.
The Cash App is Dollar Sign RM Unfiltered.
PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered.
Venmo is RM Unfiltered.
Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com.
All right, folks, and welcome back to The Culture here on the Black Star Network. Um, I wanted to have a, a, a one-on-one conversation with you just briefly. We've been talking to a number of folks about this situation that's happening here in Los Angeles with the city council and with this leaked audio of, uh, of, of former city council president Nuri Martinez and other members of the city council, as well as the labor union, uh, the labor leader, former labor leader, Ron Herrera. Now, as a result of that, yesterday, they held an emergency, they had a city council president's meeting and a city council meeting, excuse me. And of course, of course, in good all-American political fashion, they tried to go through the meeting with business as usual. That didn't work out well at all. People were cussing, people were yelling. I mean, it was not, it was not a good decision. There was no real conversation. However, something that did come out of the meeting was that, one, they had to let the, the, you know, Los Angelinos know that they could not fire the other city council people because the city charter, there's no precedent for this, so they, they, it, there is no legal bounds or there's, there's no basis for them to fire them based on the city charter. But they had put forward a motion to suspend them. And I'm talking about Kevin De Leon, and I'm calling about Gil Sedillo, that they has put something before the people, before the council to suspend them. Now, as we just talked with Dr. Gerald Horn, you know, that suspension is what they call more of a larger, more of a symbolic move. Let me just share with you very quickly, uh, what that suspension means, and I'm gonna go back to, uh, um, let me see if I can pull up this note here. If we look at, if we look at, yeah, they suspended them, and as a result of that suspension, folks, they might be taking a time away from the council, but that does not rid the council of these type of individuals who serve, who's supposed to serve in the interest of the public. Now, all of this stuff is happening in L.A. So, then it reaches to the President of the United States, who has come out through his spokesperson, Corrine, uh, Corrine Jean-Pierre, who has made the statement saying that the President was appalled, found this language to be appalling and unacceptable, and that he was glad to see that the other participants, that one out of the four decided to step down. Now, we got two out of the four that have stepped down, Ron Herrera and Nuri Martinez, but he's calling for all other, the other two, to step down. The governor of the, uh, of the state governor, Gavin Newsom, certainly called for them. The congressional, uh, representative called for, for them, for them to step down, Mr. Padilla, he's called for them to step down. A lot of people, activists, uh, um, faith leaders, a lot of folks are calling to step down. They have not yet resigned from their position. Now, when Corrine Jean-Pierre said in her statements representing the president, and now, Kina, let's go to quote number two, when she, when it was asked, you know, "How is it that the Democrats, um, is handling this?" And she said this, "Here's the difference between Democrats and Republicans. When a Democrat says something racist or anti-Semitic, we hold Democrats accountable. When a MAGA Republican says something racist and/or anti-Semitic, they are embraced by cheering crowds and become celebrated and sought after." So, all of this is creating the, the, the tide for something major to happen, which is a great moment. Now, I'm posing a question to each and every one of you that are tuning in. Do you think it was a wise decision for the President to speak on this? This is a city council. This is L.A. This is one of many cities across the country. This is a local issue, right? Quote-unquote. So, do you think it was wise? So, I want to get your take on this, uh, because this thing continues to unfold, new developments, and, and we're looking at the big picture of, of, of black-brown relations. We're looking at the big picture of Democrats have to do some, some real, um, cleaning of the House because these were all Democrats. These weren't Republicans, they were all Democrats. If we're looking at the big picture of, 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 you know, this idea that with, with black and brown in, in positions of power, does this leave a stain on that? There are a lot of factors. We're talking about backdoor dealings, we're talking about racism, we're talking about, we're just, we're talking about some very fundamental issues that continues to poison where we are in this country. All right, let me, let me go to what you have to say, folks, and post your comments on our YouTube or Facebook page, and we're gonna do our best to try to get to as many of your comments as possible, but I appreciate each and every one of you for, um, for being a part of the conversation today. All right, let me start here. Let me start with my sister, Shalinda. Shalinda, thank you for checking in. You said they were all complicit in the conversation, and they should all resign since they can only be suspended and not fired. Facts. Right, right. The fact that they did not, have not decided to resign is troubling. That's troubling. You know, you see public pressure, you see all these people, and you still stand fast. I mean, you still standing your ground while not resigning. Oh, see, now, at this point, you need to go because you're just so obnoxious, you're so arrogant, you so, felt like you so entitled. And I'm talking to them about Mr. De Leon. So, I'm with you there, Shalinda. Truth is power, you say, but you have, you always notice that when it's wrongdoing being done, wrongdoing being done, they have to take a vote just to identify it as wrongdoing, but when it's us, they don't need to investigate, they take action. You're talking about that double standard truth is power, and I'm, and I'm with you. I'm with you. I'm with you. I tweeted something else too, the other day. I said, "Everybody else can be offended except for black people." Oh, okay. When stuff happens to us, when we are the brunt of the, we are the butt and the brunt, the butt of the joke, and we take the brunt of the impact. It's like y'all need to take it. That, that's essentially when, when we, other people just say, "Well, why are they upset?" They just need to take it. But let somebody say something about some other group of people. Right? You, y'all know what I'm talking about. Let someone else say something else about some other group of people. I don't care whether you're talking about Latinos, you're talking about Jews, Armenians, whoever, let somebody else say something like, boom. They need to be, they need, they need to feel the fire of hell. When people can make fun of black folks all day, all night, with little to no consequences. Uh, what is what? You said separation is the only way. But here's my thing, though. Here's my thing on, and I think, and I'm, I'm, I'm with you, and, and I think that we still have to figure out, though, like, we still have to, 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 to be very active in ridding ourselves of this level of poisonous thinking because, as you heard, Dr. Horn, this is something that is growing. This is, this is, this is a, a growing trend all across this country and around the world. You have these very, very outdated ideas that people are holding on to, these offensive ideas, these ideas that don't include everyone, that people are holding on to, that people are espousing each and every day. And these are people who hold powerful positions. They hold powerful positions, they, they, they determine policy that affects each and every one of us. So, we got to deal with this. Like, i- i- if nothing else, I don't want to bring my, you know, bring, uh, uh, bring my children up in a system that thinks that they're accessories and monkeys. I know you don't either. So, I, I, we need to deal with this. Like, we can't run away from this, folks. We have to deal with this. And I'm all for separation. I like the idea of separation. I think that if you go and talk about separation, there got to be a lot of other conversations about what does that look like and all of those things. But while we're here together, we got to deal with this. Brother King Lee, my guy, you said, "Brother, Doctor, Professor, he is in, yay, yay, he is in Europe, the right wing is growing more and more." The Germany state of, and I don't know, make sure I'm pronouncing it, Niederschen, had elections last weekend, the right wing made, uh, gains in that state. You're talking about what Dr. Horn is saying about the growing level of fascism and racism that we're seeing in public office. This is why we need to fight. We can fight at the ballot box, and we can fight by being organized, we can fight by, by uniting with, with each other. Remember, we had a conversation earlier this week talking about how so many black folks, ideologically, we're not on the same page, according to latest research from, I think it was Pew. And if we're not on the latest, if we're not on the same page about the, some of the political things, which are blatant things, right? Like, these are not like, these are very blatant issues that we're seeing happening in the political space, and if we're not on the same page on how to address them, then we can't talk about making any gains. We can't talk about eradicating, we can't even talk about separation because guess what? A lot of our people are not in that space. We're not all that. So, we, we, we have to address what is happening right now. Uh, King, thank you so much, bro. Good to hear from you. DeAndre C., uh, you said salute. Can't they be? I'm sure there has to be a way that possible for us, uh, for those elected officials to be elected out of office, the same as they were elected into office, there has to be a safeguard. The only way they can do that is a recall, according to the, to the city charter. They have to go through a recall election. Uh, and I think Sedillo, he might be the only person that is not able to do a recall because he's scheduled, like, his term ends in December, so there's not enough time. But others, like De Leon, he can be recalled if they decide to, to move in that fashion. Uh, Karen, Karen Conne, Karen, you are a black Angelino, so you know the situation all too well. You said Nuri has a reputation known to many here in L.A. and the city of, of San Fernando, out there in the valley. Yep. Yep, and I'm learning that. I'm learning that. You know what I'm saying? As I'm coming and learning and seeing how things play out and figuring out who the power brokers are and all of those things, it's, it's like, wow. The crazy part about that, Karen, is how did people let her stay in power for so long? Because I'm hearing she's been like a stalwart of power in the city of Los Angeles for years. Like, how did that happen? Like, this is never, like, she's never expressed this, these type of sentiments before? So, that's my big question. Uh, Taylor Taylor, you checked in, Karen, it's good to hear from you. Thank you, sis, and let me know. Uh, Taylor Taylor, you said Arizona- Taylor Taylor, you said Arizona has a large Hispanic-Latino community and looks who is winning in the upcoming polls. Sheriff Sparky, you said, "Nori's fascist comments support imposing Spanish and not indigenous districts. Mark's district is the highest concentration of indigenous people who are oppressed by Spanish speakers." And see, this, you know, Dr. Horn talked about the comments made by the candidate running for LA County Sheriff, putting a big bullseye on every black man's head. This situation puts every bullseye on any Latino man or woman's head, who don't deserve it. Right? Because now, black people, we going to look at each other, we looking at the Latino brother and sister and like, y'all racist too. Y'all racist too. So this is not good. This is not good for anybody. That's why I asked the question that Dr. Horn in the last segment. What about the next generation of Latino men and women? These young men, these young women who are coming up in this time period? Because they got to get involved, because that's the only way you go and break this cycle of hate. You got to educate the young. You got to, you got to make sure that they are racially literate. You got to make sure that they understand what the stakes are and how important it is for them to be, to have the right view of other people in their city. Chris, Chris Bake, you checked in and said, "Look, I think as President of these United States, it's his duty to speak on cultural and political actions, especially if they are negative. After all, everything comes back to him." You're absolutely right, Chris. Here's my take on this. I think the President weighed in on this conversation, on this situation, because, one, it's a huge slap in the face for what the Democrats, quote unquote, stand for, right? Democrats is not supposed to be the party of hate. The Democrats is supposed to be the big tent party that embraces all. The Democrats is looking to be that party that embraces the Latino, the black, the white, bring us all in a space of unity. So I think that's one. But two, on a political side, we have Congresswoman Karen Bass, who's running for office here, right? So, you know, LA is such a major component. The state of California is a major component. You got Karen Bass running for LA, a black woman. You got Governor Gavin Newsom, who has thrown out there that he would run for President, right? And he's probably one of the few names that may have an actual shot of getting the presidency, right? So California has always been progressive, has always kind of leading the way on a number of issues. So, and, and big money people live out in California. Can't forget that part. There's a lot of big money people that live out here, the donors to give to the Democratic Party, live out here. So it is, I think, oh, and the final point about that is that House Speaker Nancy Pelosi, I think she's up for reelection, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I want to check my, I'm going to check the, I'm going to check the, check the documents around this. But I think she's up for reelection. She's supposed to have some fundraisers over these next couple of weeks, right? That President Biden is going to be, you know, stopping by and checking out. So politically, it's in his best interest. It's in his best interest. Now, folks, if you just noticed on our YouTube chat, there's a poll that we posted, "Was it wise for President Biden to weigh in on the LA City Council scandal?" If you haven't, many of you have already said it. Eighty percent of you said, yes, it is wise. Twenty percent of you said, no, it is not wise. But there are so many political connections that President Biden sees, that there's a political opportunities that may be spoiled as a result of this, so he had to weigh in. You got Gavin Newsom, somebody has to possibly replace you. You got Speaker Nancy Pelosi trying to get for reelection. You want to keep her voice there. You got Karen Bass, who you want to keep, you want to keep, you want to keep a black woman in that space, right? I'm looking up something else, folks. Check this out. I'm looking up something else as we have this conversation. I want to know what is, and if y'all can tell me, what is the budget? What's the budget? The LA budget of, what's the budget? Because this is a, this is a, this is a, this is big money here. Last year, LA Mayor Eric Garcetti approved the city budget. Y'all ready for this? Last year, he approved the city budget, which stood at a whopping $11.2 billion. $11.2 billion, folks. That's not small money. That's not small money by any stretch of the imagination. So if you think about, and many of you might, some of you, I'm not going to say many. Some of you might be thinking to yourself, well, why would Karen Bass, who was in Congress, why would she step away from her federal position to a local position? Because she got more power as the mayor of LA with an $11 billion budget than she does as a congressperson of a district. Y'all see, y'all see this? Y'all see this? She got more power. LA is one of the most populous states and cities in the country. It's the home of Hollywood and other industries, tech. You got, like I said, donors. You got a lot of things here in the city. The, according to the 2020 census, four, there are about 3.9 million people in the city of LA, 10 million people in the county of LA. And, you know, we traveling all throughout. We crossing lines every day, B. You know what I mean? So you talking about 14 million people? Man, that's power. That's power. Not diminishing the role of a congressperson. I'm just letting you know. What I think might be the thought pattern of this situation. So you got a vested interest in the city of Los Angeles culturally, financially, politically, and you got a vested interest in the state of California, because this might be the home of your next president in Gavin Newsom. Why wouldn't the President speak on it? He looking at his interests. So we will see. We will have to see how this thing unfolds. I'm keeping my eyes out on it. Of course, I'm going to keep you posted on the situation. But this is, this is, and this could be a game changer. I'm going to Dr. Horn's point as we wrap up. If Los Angeles, which this story has made nationally, international news because of the elements of power and racism and, 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 and race, and, you know, in terms of being Latino, racist tropes being tossed around and all of those things. If the city of Los Angeles is able to find a way to move forward from this in a productive way, where the relationship between black and brown communities are strengthened as a result of this, then can you imagine how that will serve as a model for other cities who may be facing the same thing in their city councils or even in their state legislatures? If LA is able to get through this, right? Again, not with a press release, not with an apology statement, but to get through this where the people, the residents of the city of Los Angeles, both black and brown, the Armenians, the Oaxacan community, and others who have a vested interest, and we all got a vested interest. If we're able to get through this, right, with having the right conversations based upon truth, based upon history, based upon interest of all the communities and stakeholders, if we're able to get through this with, in the most productive way, that, again, LA will be seen as a model city in helping a city that has been rife with racism. We ain't forgot about Rodney King. We ain't forgot about a whole bunch of other racist incidents that have happened. If the city can deal with this and really start to uproot this from city government and other industries, it can serve as a model. It can be a beacon of hope that other cities that are smaller can use to get rid of that type of thinking in government. If the city does it right, if the people, and it comes down to the people. It always come down. City Hall can put out a lot of legislatures, policies, but it comes down to the people saying enough is enough. And if, at yesterday's council meeting, there was the sentiment that something needs to change, that corruption needs to be uprooted, that racism needs to be eradicated, but guess what? That can't happen from City Hall. That has to happen from the households and the communities, and most importantly, from the hearts and the minds of the people. All right, folks, look, I got to take a quick pause. Yeah, we got a lot to talk about. Look, when we take, when we come forward, let's talk about fashion. We're going to take fashion to the next level. We're going to be checking in with Patrick Cupid to discuss that. And later on, I'm going to talk to the Sisters of the Day Without Us. Remember I told you about how they had their, their day, speaking out against, speaking up for women's reproductive rights? Well, we're going to talk to them about what's happening, what's going to be the next step of their movement. So stay with us. A lot coming at you in the next hour of the culture, right here on the Black Star Network.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe. We all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Pull up a chair. Take your seat. The Black Tape with me, Dr. Greg Carr, here on the Black Star Network. Every week, we'll take a deeper dive into the world we're living in. Join the conversation only on the Black Star Network.
I'm Jember Owens, America's Wealth Coach, and my new show, Get Wealthy, focuses on the things that your financial advisor and bank isn't telling you, but you absolutely need to know. So watch Get Wealthy on the Black Star Network.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jackie Hood Martin, and I have a question for you. Ever feel as if your life is teetering and the weight and pressure of the world is consistently on your shoulders? Well, let me tell you, living a balanced life isn't easy. Join me each Tuesday on Black Star Network for a balanced life with Dr. Jackie. We'll laugh together, cry together, pull ourselves together, and cheer each other on. So join me for new shows each Tuesday on Black Star Network, A Balanced Life with Dr. Jackie.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
All right, folks, welcome back to the show. Welcome back to the culture here on the Black Star Network. Thank you so much for tuning in for the second hour. Folks, I had a dynamic conversation talking about with our horn report that we, we air every Wednesday, as well as our discussion around what's happening here in the city of Los Angeles and the city council scandal that continues to rock the city and political spaces all across this country. So, folks, if you didn't get a chance to listen to what we had to say in the first hour, make sure y'all check this out on the replay. And while you're checking this out, make sure you share the replay with all your family and friends. Just let people know that you tune into the culture here on the Black Star Network. Now, we can't have no conversation without you, so that's why it's important that we give you our support financially, because we want to make sure that we're having these conversations in an unindulterated way. So go to blackstarnetwork.com, support the network, support the growth, support the movement that we have here with black media. You can definitely check us out and learn all that you can and more at blackstarnetwork.com. Share the information. And if you want to connect with me, you can certainly connect with me on my social media at TheRealFaraji on Instagram, Faraji on Twitter, and Faraji Muhammad on Facebook. All right, folks, we wanted to switch gears in the discussion. Now, we're talking from politics to talking about more cultural things, which is the, I would say, one of the big cultural things that I often see in our community is our presentation, fashion. Fashion is a huge part of our culture because it has become the Monaco on how we see the world and how we want the world to see us. So today, we are talking to our very special guest, Mr. Patrick Cupid, who is a fashion designer and entrepreneur. He was raised and now based in New York City. He credits his design vocabulary to his hometown for its rich diversity. And in response to the new realities of modern living, he combines luxury and leisure, allowing for a seamless transition between professional and social events without sacrificing independent style. So I want to welcome to the airwaves of the Black Star Network and the culture, Mr. Patrick Cupid. Brother Patrick, how are you this afternoon?
Hey, I'm good. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let's talk a little bit about this, because I'm talking about taking fashion to the next level. Why is it that we need to have a conversation about fashion and, more importantly, a fashion that reflects our independent style? I've just read just a little bit about the work that you're doing. And it's not just about clothes. It's not just about putting a few pieces of fabric together. This is, this is, this is something much deeper for the work that you do, Patrick.
It is. I mean, it's, I treat the Patrick Cupid brand more like a conversation, you know, and a continued dialogue about individualism and about like self-identity. I think the conversation is important because more and more, as we move into this digital world, right? Like, now we're talking metaverse, we're all on social media. Everything is about the influencer, and so we're sort of living in this world where what is outside, what is happening, you know, beyond ourselves is sort of more important. And, you know, we tend to lose our voices. We tend to lose ourselves, you know, in that by following the influencers. I had a conversation earlier today about this idea of cool. You know, like, remember when things were cool? Well, cool had this sort of connotation of individualism. You know, people, when they thought about doing something cool, it was because they liked it. It's because it appealed to them. It was a reflection or an expression of either who they were, of their interests, of how they felt, you know, in the moment or whatever it was going on. You know, people used to say, you know, I remember growing up, you know, and hearing, you know, when I was in high school, other places, "Oh, I want to be different," or "I want to be individual," or "I just, you know, I want to be me." And now we're moving into this world where it's just like, oh, you know, it's all trend, right? We're doing it because the influencer said so. We're doing it because the Kardashians are doing it, or we're doing it because, you know, Kanye's doing it, or whoever else is, you know, has our attention for the moment.
Absolutely, absolutely. So how do we define cool at this point?
I think it's getting back to listening to yourself, like, having your own voice, right? You know, what is your personal style, you know? Or even if you do something, you know, you buy mainstream fashion and you go out, what is your spin on it? You know, it's the way you wear the blazer. It's the way you wear the jacket. It's the way you wear the sneaker. You know, it's the way you, you know, maybe do your hair, you know, slightly different than something else. It's that one special thing. I mean, you know, the term like, you know, cool or the cool kids were always the people that were sort of daring, right? They were sort of the outsider. You know, they didn't roll and click. They were sort of always doing their own thing. But you noticed, you know, you noticed, and you were like, oh, wow, you know, like, and again, the response was, now, that's really cool. Or, you know, oh, that's so different, or that's so unique. And it would inspire people either to do their own thing or to put their own spin on it. Some people became followers and like, you know, just tried to mimic or pick up on it in some way. But there was still this vast idea of, you know, how do I, how do I do it my way? Or even if I'm inspired, inspiration is not copying, right? Inspiration is, you know, okay, well, that gave me an idea, and this is how I'm going to expand on it, right? This is how I'm going to put it in my own words, or this is how I'm going to illustrate that and show it, you know, my version of that to the world, as opposed to, well, I'm going to do exactly what that person's doing. And what I feel or have to say is of no consequence.
So Patrick, that brings me to something that I, that, you know, I feel like that we're all challenged by because we are in a social media-driven world, right? Social media continues to be this thing. And even the idea of being a quote-unquote influencer, it's always like one of these, like, And even the idea of being a quote unquote an influencer, it's always like one of these like hate to love terms, you know what I mean? Because so many times like we, we, we expecting people to, to, to know what their personal style is. Their personal style is still a reflection of someone else's view of what style is, of what cool is, right? And so, you know, in a space where there are so many people that are coming up, like for example, I see a lot of black men, you know, then this is the power of trends. It's like when you see a trend happening, you know, a black man wears hair a certain way, we all got beds now, you know what I'm saying? Like, you know, I remember, and you remember, I'm sure you remember this, I remember when Lil Wayne first, when Lil Wayne became hot as an artist, like he was always on the scene. But then at a certain point, everybody had locks, everybody had tats on their face, right? And that's why I think it's funny on his God did verse, he's like, you know, I was tat on my face locks and I was the apex of the, I am the culture, like, you know? When Jay-Z said, you know, we, we wearing button ups now and, 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 you know, I mean, and now we wearing jeans, that's like the whole party scene was like, oh, we off of jerseys? Oh, okay. We left on some button ups, now we have the button ups on that. So it's like, it's like, when you're operating in a space where you have people who are, who have these platforms, they are able to dictate what the cool is, to dictate the culture, how do you still get people to say, to take a minute and to say, stop? What is your expression? Not what is your version of someone else's expression, but what is your expression? What is, what do you feel like wearing? What do you, what defines or how do you want to be presented to the world? How do you, how do you do that?
I think it's first is through conversations like this, right? And it's by giving people more options, you know, of what to wear. I mean, now in the last couple of years, we're seeing a focus on black designers and black talent in the industry. Uh, have always been the inspiration, um, for European brands and other companies. I mean, Karl Lagerfeld was famous for coming into Harlem and to the Bronx and the streets of New York and picking up the street style that was made popular by, you know, or in black communities. And then taking that back to Fendi and Chanel and then selling it right back to us. So, uh, the conversations have to happen. I, I, I think people need, you know, it's especially like as a black male, you know, we have socially been locked out for such a long time and told that we don't have a voice, you know, what we, how we feel, uh, doesn't matter, you know? We, we weren't allowed to have feelings. Like first, you know, you have to be a man and boys don't cry, you don't have feelings and you just, uh, but then also when it came down to, uh, financial matters or in the corporate world and the corporate sector, you know, we weren't getting jobs, you know, we weren't being placed, we weren't being hired. We were not the CEOs and CFOs, we were not in the boardrooms, we were not in, um, you know, wasn't until the nineties, we really got even into the mailroom, you know? So there, it's a deeper conversation about your self-expression or about being able to say, you know, to share what, what your knowledge, to share your, your wealth that comes from inside. And I think, you know, fashion is just one of those ways. So I, I think having the conversations and moving the needle forward by giving space to people as a whole, you know, uh, men, uh, uh, women, you know, I designed women's clothing, but men as well, um, and especially black men to express themselves, you know, and to not shame them for it, you know? Like, you know, it, a couple of years ago, if a guy was wearing pink, you know, guys would make fun of him, oh, you know, that's this or, you know, and the comments that would come around, where I think that have to stop, like it has to be okay, um, for a person to be themselves. Like I admire, uh, Lil Nas X for coming out and like, you know, and his bold, sort of very in-your-face way of, I don't care what you think about me. I'm going to express myself and I'm going to be exactly who, what, you know, who I am, whether you love him or hate him. Uh, we need that. We, we need that because we need for people to understand and see, you know, because what we feel and what we think is relevant. Um, you know, we're moving into spheres where, you know, you have, um, you know, Virgil, you know, God rest his soul, uh, was, you know, at Louis Vuitton and doing many, many things, you know, like that is a nuance, like that's really, really important to have that, you know?
And, and there, there, there's only, you know, I, I think I read a figure and you correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, that I was like, we only represent a like 1% of, 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 of folks in these major fashion houses. Is that, is that accurate?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I'm not going to quote the number, but yeah, I mean, we're not, you know, and the, the joke is in the higher positions, um, you know, the biggest names, uh, in fashion for black designers, uh, globally, you know, were both in France. Um, and then we have some here in the United States, you know, but that are looking at, you know, doing like hip hop and streetwear, you know? Even I myself have been, you know, sort of categorized or pigeonholed into, you know, when I say designer, people go, oh, you know, it might be some really cool streetwear, you know? Is it like hip hop? And I'm like, no, I think it's ready to prepare.
So would you design football?
No, God, you know, uh, no, uh, there has to be more room for us than that, you know? And now we're seeing, um, where they, they are listening, you know, the world is paying attention. They're seeing that we are more than just that, um, that we have more ideas, there are more influences, there are more, um, inspired concepts that are coming out of the community in different ways to do it. I mean, you know, the reality is we change the way the world dresses more than once, you know? At hip hop and street style from the late eighties with the baggy jeans and the oversized clothes and, you know, the windbreakers and the sweatpants and then wearing sneakers. So now people are wearing sneakers on the red carpet. They're doing it all over the world, they're doing it in China, they're doing it in Japan, they're doing it in India. People want to get in on, you know, on sneakers, people want to get in on urban fashion. Well, that was us.
Right, right.
If we could do that and we could affect the world that way, what else, what else can we say? What else can we do that can move the needle forward? What, what else, you know? But unless we express ourselves in that way, unless we're allowed to say that, unless we're allowed to show what we can do and, and not even toward the outside world, but even for ourselves, unless we feel confident in how we look and how we dress, um, you know, then if it doesn't matter to us, then why would it matter to anyone else?
And, and I want to get your take on something. This has been, uh, what, this thing that I'm about to share or get your, your view on has been something that I see a lot of black men uh, talk about, which is, you know, you're seeing styles that a lot of, like there's, it seems to be a quote unquote feminization of black male styles when it comes to clothes, right? That, that black men are experimenting and some people will even go to say, oh, you're going too far when you're wearing certain things and that we see from, you know, celebrities to high-profile figures. And I wanted to get your take on that, like, you know, where, where, what, how should we see when we see black men wearing certain things? And I remember when skinny jeans came out, man, brother, you know, I'm sure, you know what I mean? Like brothers were like, I mean, from the baggy jean world and the long tees to skinny jeans is like, what's going on here? What's, what's really happening? And some people will even go as far as to say, Patrick, that there's a conspiracy to feminize black males and, 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 you know, the dress code of black males. Um, as a man that designed clothes, what, what do you, what do you make of this conversation? And, and how should we see the, the various styles that men, particularly black men, are experimenting right now? Um, from the colors to the fabrics, to the, to the, to the styles themselves?
I say, you know, throw this conspiracy in the trash. Um, because if, when, you know, when white men do it, when Asian men do it, when Latino men do it, we celebrate it, we applaud. We're like, oh, that's, you know, that's hot, that's fly, oh, that's so cool. Or that's, you know, it's, that's so futuristic, that's so contemporary, or that's so artsy, you know? No one call, goes around calling them effeminate. A white man comes in and it's, it's a pair of tight skinny jeans, no one's calling him effeminate, no one's questioning him. It's okay for him to do it, it's masculine for him to do it. He's still a man in that look. When they wear, you know, a, a kilt, um, is a cultural staple from Scotland, right? No one's bringing them effeminate, no one's saying, oh, we're putting men in skirts. Tom Brown is one of the biggest designers now and he's doing, you know, uh, skirts for men in, in, in suits. It's clothes, you know, it's fabric, it's, it's a personal self-expression. If you like pants, wear pants. If you like a skirt, wear a skirt. You know, culturally, we have been reduced as black men to, um, the sexual animals and really nothing more. And that was a, to dehumanize us by confusing us about our sexuality and about our identity and, uh, you know, of what masculinity is and masculinity isn't. You're masculine if you're a thug, you know, or if you're gang banging, or if, you know, if you're hardcore and, you know, your pants are too big and they're sagging off, you know, if you, if you come into the hood and you're well dressed and your pants are on your waist and you got a belt, you know, you're a sissy, you're all kinds of things, you're anything but a man. You know, and that's garbage. That doesn't happen in other cultures, that doesn't happen amongst other nationalities, you know? And this is also something that's very pervasive here in the United States. You go into the Caribbean, uh, you know, you go to Jamaica, they've been wearing yellow and green and pink and purple forever. Fishnet, you know, or netted tops and tank tops, you would see the Jamaican guys running around with their chest and stuff out. The, you know, the jeans are extremely tight and everything else, you know, because they're not taught to be ashamed of their bodies. They're not taught to be ashamed of who they are. They're, they're still masculine, they're still men, there's no question in their mind about it. Italian men are the same, they wear beautiful clothes and, you know, and the way that they dress themselves and the clothes are more fitted and like tailored to their bodies where they're showing their bodies off. And no one's saying anything about them or, or questioning their masculinity in any way. So I think before we start, um, accusing others of sort of feminizing black men, I think we have to start to ask the question as to why that's an issue? Why, um, are, are we even having that discussion in the first place? You know, why is black masculinity even being questioned from jump street? You know, like, like what is it about that? Um, that, and, and it's another way of also, uh, silencing us. You know, again, the way that we dress is, is an expression of, it's, it's a self-expression. So if you take away our self-expression, if you make us insecure about the way that we look and then we're going to be insecure about how we feel, we're going to be less likely to speak up. We're not going to be comfortable when we enter into the room because we're going to be trying to fit into a mold that doesn't, that we don't fit into, that doesn't belong to us, and that's never going to feel good. So we're always going to be on this edge of never feeling good enough, never feeling masculine enough, never feeling man enough, never feeling black enough, never feeling wealthy enough, never feeling good enough at the end of the day. And, and I think when we start to say those things, you know, no, I think we need to take that away. And I need to, I think we need to start celebrating each other in our differences and what we bring to the table. You know, you, you can't build new things if we're constantly stuck on the same thing all the time. We, we, we won't move forward, we won't change if we're doing the same thing, if we've been doing the same thing for the last hundred years. It's, it's not going to work.
And I think it's, I think it's a, it's an indicator of, of the, the changing of how we define manhood today, right? I mean, I think there's a, I think there is just a growing consciousness that's happening in this country and around the world. Um, from, you know, from terms to, to personal expression through our clothes and fashion, where people are trying to transition out of old way of doing things and trying to figure out, okay, what is going to be the new norm on how we see each other? I mean, you, you spoke about the, the, the whole, you know, men don't cry type of thing. Like there's a lot of pushback around, you know, toxic masculinity and more importantly, what does masculine, being masculine look like, right? And so I think that's an ongoing conversation, but I think that is even more an ongoing personal expression. Because nobody grants you masculinity or femininity.
Right.
You know, I mean, like you, you're, you're born a certain way, but how you express yourself, that's your choice.
It is, it is your choice. It's going to have to do a lot with who you are internally. It's going to have to do a lot with how raised, you know, and, and your interest and the things that you like and what they, you know, and what that might be. There's going to be a lot of factors playing into that. But what we have to stop doing is silencing each other and stop silencing our children. You know, stop silencing, you know, our voices, like, you know, even when I was growing up, um, you know, I had to hide when I, I would sketch, you know, because I was, I was sketching clothing, I, I was sewing up for dolls and doing all these different things. And I had to hide that, you know, because there was a fear of getting in trouble or I'm doing something wrong or boys don't sew, you know? So boys don't do that. Well, if we never, if I didn't continue that, I wouldn't be here having this conversation right now, you know? If Virgil didn't take an interest, if, if these other black men didn't take an interest in clothes and in fashion, you know, there, we wouldn't even be 1%. There, there would be no hip hop, there'd be no street style. So that has to stop, you know, like these, these, these ideas that we put on our kids, you know, try finding out who they are first and celebrate them in that, help them to be secure in that, in who they are. You know, the way that other children are celebrated for who they are and get, and get to do what they want to do. You know, their parents will do everything in their power to help them become the best version of themselves.
Yeah.
That they can be as opposed to doing everything in their power to shut down who you are, to try to make you fit into this mold because they're afraid of what, how the world is going to view you, you know? The, the world is going to be scared of us no matter what we do because of the, the color of our skin, you know? Unfortunately, that's just the way it is. But, um, again, unless we're able to express ourselves and let them see who we really are, that also isn't going to change.
Absolutely, absolutely. Let me go take a couple of, um, of, of, of comments from our online culture crew, uh, Patrick, because folks are checking in. And this conversation is driving many people to, you know, to, to have the discussion online about, you know, everything from masculinity to personal expression to what should we expect from black designers like yourself? Let me just tell you, my wife is a huge, huge lover of black designers. So I'm about to just show her your website. Kena, let's pull up the website so people can see what Patrick has to offer because Patrick is doing it real big, folks. PatrickCupid.com, that's the website to check out what our brother is doing. Um, and, and, and it's a beautiful thing. Uh, it's absolutely a beautiful thing, man. And, and when you go to the site, just take a look at some of the, 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 the designs that this brother has put together for black women, representing the beauty, the power, the boldness, the creative expression of women and black women. Look at some of the fabrics, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm learning, I'm learning, brother. I'm learning about fashion, I'm learning a little bit about fabrics and textiles, I'm learning about, you know what I'm saying? Like what fits and what doesn't fit, what works and what doesn't work. So, you know, when I went to the website, I was just blown away like, man, this is some really beautiful things that you, that you put on me. This is really an art. This is an art, yes, there's a business, but this is an art to learn how to do fashion and take a look at this. To learn how to, 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 to design and to learn how to create. This is an art and for men to do it for the women, I've seen women do it for men. That is a very, very impressive skill, Patrick, very impressive. And this is PatrickCupid.com and this is where y'all can check out all of his latest, uh, pieces and you can order pieces directly to you for this. Now, let, let me just share with you a couple of, uh, what folks are saying, um, about this, this whole conversation. And I really liked what Taylor Taylor, you said, you said, people saw people like Prince wore pink and ruffles. MJ, skinny jeans.
They loved him for it.
And, and Rotten, whatever he wore. But they didn't come out trying to copy them. They inspired individualism. Make it work for you. I love that. I love that. I love that. I remember, look, you know, we, we, we laugh and we, you know, I know a lot of dudes, Prince will whip your ass, man, you know what I'm saying? Hey, look, Patrick, I remember seeing this documentary on El DeBarge.
Yeah.
And, and his brothers, right? You know, of course, everybody know El DeBarge, the famous singing group and everything. And, you know, one of the guys in the documentary said, yeah, we were wearing these type of clothes and a lot of people thought we were soft. He said, nah, bro, don't get it twisted. We made the glittery clothes, we wear the soft fabrics. But if he crosses, he's saying, and people would come up, and this was like one of the brothers of El DeBarge. He said, people would approach my brother and challenge him about his masculinity, challenge him about things. And he said, we had to take a couple of people to the back and had to whip their ass. And I was like, whoa, what? El DeBarge? She going on, and she going again? Y'all screaming in the rhythm of the night and then you whipping ass? Like, yo, yo. So I mean, it just, it just, it just, I mean, fashion, fashion brings all types of people. Fashion is a big, big form. As we close out on this conversation, Patrick, as we look at where fashion As we close out on this conversation, Patrick, as we look at where fashion is going, yes, you, uh, I know of the brother Brandon Blackwell, my wife loves some of the, some of the pieces that he puts out, the purses and everything. Name them, brother. Who, who are the people, who are the black designers that we need to support uh moving forward?
Uh, there's, uh Carlton Jones comes to mind, Nicole Benenfield, who's a very good friend. Um, Isling Camp, uh, she's doing some wonderful things in knitwear. Um, Ginny, um, uh, Essential Hats, you know, like are phenomenal. So if you're out for hats and you're looking for, you know, like, you know, definitely check out, check out Essential, they're all on Instagram. Um, if you can't find them, you can follow me on Instagram at Patrick Cupid. Um, and you can go through my list and you'll see them, you know, posted or shared or, or anything and you can find them. Uh, you know, and, and just stay on top of it. I, I mean, there, there are so many black designers, um, you know, that are not mainstream, that are doing, delivering beautiful quality, really, really great and innovative design. Um, it's not always, you know, at very different price points. So there's really something at every price point. People say, oh, well, you know, some things are too expensive or some things are not enough. No, we're out here and there are many, many, you know, to choose from, you know, and you, you can find something, you know, and to be supportive and, and something that reflects you. I mean, you know, it's, it's, we grow together. So, yeah, check us out.
So, so, so Patrick, as we wrap up really quickly, what, what, what's the, what's the key to your success? I mean, you, 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 you are producing women's clothes, you are in these spaces, you are a, a, a black man that's, that's doing something that a few, only a few black men have the ability to do. What's the key to your success, brother?
Focus and dedication, like those, those are the two things. Um, and that's anything you want to do. For me, really, it doesn't really matter what it is. Like, once you decide what you want.
Yeah.
You have to focus on it and you have to get it. I mean, don't think that there aren't going to be challenges, don't think that, I don't see challenges, I do. You know, um, you know, I, I know who I am and I know where I come from, um, and I know what those, those challenges bring. But I still have to look beyond that because I have a goal and I have a place that I want to get to. And every step, you know, that I make forward gets me closer to it. And so as long as I stay on that path, you know, yeah, when there's hard days, you know, you make mistakes, you know, things happen, there are going to be challenges and that comes with the territory, you know? If, if those, those are good problems to have, you know? If um, you know, there's an issue with a client, I celebrate that because I have a client to have an issue with, right? So if I didn't have, it's a different problem. So, you know, it's, it's where your mind is at. Um, and, and where your focus lies is really what's going to get, is what's going to get you there. That's the key to success, focus.
Hey, brother, I, look, Patrick, first and foremost, I thank you for your time. And more importantly, I thank you for, for being who you are um and, and breaking the barriers. I know for our great brother Virgil Abloh, you know, he, he set the mark. But brothers like you and others who are kind of leading, leading the charge to make sure that we're represented um in the high fashion world. Um, and I, I didn't get a chance to, to, to pick your brain about Kanye and his ongoing gripe with the fashion world.
Ah, yeah, like, let me not make people mad right now because I'm. Yeah.
I'm just saying, like.
How much time do we have left in this?
I ain't talking about all the other stuff. I ain't, I'm just saying his ongoing beef with the fashion world.
Yeah.
In 30 seconds, what do you make of that? He's always claiming that he don't have no space, nobody's letting at the table. But Kanye, you are billionaire, so I'm just, I'm just supposedly, you're supposed to be a billionaire. Your shoes are moving, you're making clothes. And, and then it's like you're, 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 you're getting sponsored by Adidas, Gap and the other major brands. But you're saying that you're, you're not being supported. You just had a fashion show in Paris and I'm talking about the political side. I mean, what do you, what do you make of that? Is he good for the fashion world, for black fashion designers like you?
I think.
Okay, thank you so much, Patrick, I appreciate you. That part said everything, you were like.
No, what, what I'm going to say is this, what, what I'm going to say is, is that any of us, you know, good, bad or indifferent, um, that is there, that's in the space. You know, what you do in the space when you get in, when they open, when the door opens and you have a seat at the table, what you do with that does matter, you know? So be wise in your words, be wise in your choices and in your decisions because, you know, you can't have the door slammed behind you and I don't think Kanye has. Um, I think his presence alone and the fact that he is a disruptor um in the industry, you know, makes room for all of us, right? Because now you, you kind of have to pay attention. He, he got as far as he did, you know, he's earned it, he's done the work, he's got himself there, you know? And I have nothing but respect for him on that level. Um, and I think it shows that we can do that. It says, it says that to us, it says to other black men and, and, you know, other black people as a whole that, yeah, we can get there, we can get those endorsements, we can get to do the major shows in Paris and in other places. We can get um, you know, Vogue to pay attention and, you know, these editors and things to come out and see us, you know, if we do the work and, and if we really focus and strive and get there. So I think regardless of whether you love or hate or you're indifferent to Kanye, I think his presence has to be noted and it has to be respected because it does move the needle forward for us. It does, regardless of how we feel, it, it does.
Wow, that's huge. That's big. My man, my man, my man King Lee said, I agree with you, brother Patrick Cupid regarding yay, thanks for pointing that out. That's huge. Like, all of this stuff is leading to something good.
It's, it's, it's factual. I mean, there's, there are conversations around, you know, that have to be had. And whether regardless of what side he stands on it, the conversations are being had, right? Like, we're having the conversations now, we're talking about it, we're being challenged in that way. And, you know, if not him, then who, right? Like, somebody has to like to go in and shake things up um in order for the rest of us to come out and say, you know, to be able to have an opinion about fashion, style, yeah, so.
Are we talking about Kanye West or you talking about my, my big brother Roland Martin? Because that's what he's doing on the media, black media side too. He's disrupting.
Yeah.
He's, and you know what, you need that. I'm, 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 I'm not making, I'm, I'm being honest, you need that. And plus, everyone in our fam, everyone knows they got that one family member that gets shit kicked off. You know what I'm saying? Like, like, oh, well, who, you know, somebody, you might have came home from school and been like, somebody bothered me at school. And then you know, some family like, well, okay, just handle this one. You got that one family member and be like, whose ass you about to kick today? We going to their house right now. Oh, that's the someone's all out of corner, get the Vaseline. Like, they just. We need them, we need disruptors, we need disruptors. All right, Patrick, I took enough of, uh, I took enough of your town, brother. I appreciate you, man. Thank you for doing the great work, brother. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Folks, the website is PatrickCupid.com. You can check out all of his latest fashions, all of the details about the great work that he's doing. He's designing beautiful, beautiful fashions. Make sure y'all follow him on all social media platforms. And let's continue to have the conversations about our self-expression, our fashion that's good for the culture. Patrick Cupid, thank you, brother, for being so good for the culture. I truly appreciate you, brother.
No problem, thank you, all right.
Absolutely. All right, folks, we got to take a quick pause when we come forward. Look, I'm going to talk to some of the ladies uh that is doing the great work of making sure that we don't forget about the, the importance of women reproductive rights. We talked a little bit about the Day Without Us campaign. And so in a few moments, we're going to talk to the campaign director, Ms. Tiffany Flowers, to bring us up to state on what's the next step for this movement. Stay with us, that's coming up right here on the Culture on the Black Star Network.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene, a white nationalist rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their damn minds.
There's an angry pro-Trump mob storm to the US Capitol.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance.
We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at Emory University calls white rage as a backlash.
This is the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
There's all the Proud Boys, guys.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking our women, this is white fear.
When you talk about blackness and what happens in black culture, we're about covering these things that matter to us, uh, speaking to our issues and concerns.
This is a genuine people-powered movement.
There's a lot of stuff that we're not getting, you get it, and you spread the word.
We wish to plead our own cause, too long have others spoken for us. We cannot tell our own story if we can't pay for it.
This is about uh covering us.
Invest in black-owned media.
Your dollars matter.
We don't have to keep asking them to cover our stuff.
So please support us in what we do, folks.
We want to hit 2,000 people, $50 this month, raise $100,000. We're behind 100,000, so we want to hit that. Y'all money makes this possible.
Check some money orders, go to Peel Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. The Cash App is Dollar Sign RM Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is RM Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolansMartin.com.
When we invest in ourselves, we're investing in what's next for all of us. Growing, creating, making moves, that move us all forward. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jackie Hood Martin, and I have a question for you. Ever feel as if your life is teetering and the weight and pressure of the world is consistently on your shoulders? Well, let me tell you, living a balanced life isn't easy. Join me each Tuesday on Black Star Network for a balanced life with Dr. Jackie. We'll laugh together, cry together, pull ourselves together and cheer each other on. So join me for new shows each Tuesday on Black Star Network, a balanced life with Dr. Jackie.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
All right, folks, for our final conversation today, I wanted to, us to get an update on that very, very powerful demonstration of a day without us. This is the demonstration where women from all across the country had decided to say enough is enough. And this was an organized, black woman-led uh reproductive uh, uh, effort with reproductive justice advocates and organizers who have developed an inclusive table with supporting organizations. And basically, the goal of this day that we saw um earlier this month um is to provide education on information for how people can collectively take action during this critical point in history when we're looking at the reversal of Roe v. Wade and the Hyde Amendment and other policies that decline, that diminishes the right of, of, of a woman to have agency over her body and for, to make the best decisions that are for her interests. So we wanted to talk to the campaign director of the Day Without Us, Ms. Tiffany Flowers, who's joining us right now. Tiffany, thank you for, for checking in and being with us this afternoon. How are you?
I'm really honored to be here. Thank you so much for having me.
Oh, absolutely. I've been, I've been trying to hunch y'all down.
We busy out here, you know.
Y'all busy, there's some busy black women, man, y'all too busy. Let me stop, let me stop playing. We like, we out here saving lives for Raji, we saving lives.
Raji, we doing what you're doing, we out here working for the culture. We're out here trying to make sure our people don't get left behind and we get all the information that we need. So you, you know, that's the, that's the 24/7 job.
Oh, and I know it all too well, Tiffany, all too well. All right, so, so let's talk about this, the day without us. We had, uh, when I heard about this day, I was so excited because I felt like it was a, you know, there's always this ongoing kind of conversation. But I love when black women are able to take their words, put it into action and, 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 and make it into something more tangible. This day that happened, and I mean, it didn't happen exactly like, oh, Roe v. Wade was reversed, boom, we going to do a day without us. There was some planning that was done that you sisters did, there was some networking that you sisters did, and there was some intentionality behind the work that you sisters did to make this day happen. First and foremost, talk to us about what happened on that day and what were some of the things that came out that we need to be aware of?
Yeah, uh, so first and foremost, I just want to highlight because I always try to highlight why we picked that day. Friday, September 30th was the 46th anniversary of the Hyde Amendment. And for our folks and friends and family who don't know, the Hyde Amendment allows for uh people who can give birth, women and people that birth, um, if you are on government assistance for your health care and a doctor is to say to you, you know, if you carry on this pregnancy, it puts your life at danger, you could die, you could become very ill. If you do not have the monetary means to solve that problem yourself, you could die. And the government has left that statute in place for 46 years. There have been innumerable deaths and innumerable levels of harm caused to people by leaving this amendment in place. And it actually needs to end. Um, and so we picked that day because we wanted to highlight what that actually means, how much harm it perpetuates. And also Friday, the 30th was a few days before the Supreme Court came back. So what came out of that day was a true um linking of movements, right? We had people there like Latasha Brown and, and Cliff from, Cliff Albright from Black Voters Matters and Judith, um, Dianus Brown from Advancement Project. But then we also had young people there from March For Our Lives and the Grad Student Action Network. And then we had people like uh Black Men Build in the House and Tanya Fields over at the Black Feminist Project talking about the ways in which reproductive justice is an issue that affects us all, right? And so if you're not talking about bodily autonomy and freedom, but you're organizing around labor rights or you're deep in the black uh organizing struggle, but you're not thinking about how that ties into climate, then we're not doing our work. And so the point of that day was to tie everything together and say, hey, folks, this Roe um decision wasn't just about abortion rights and women, it's actually an attack on all of our rights and all of our bodily freedoms.
So, so, it, 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 but this is being kind of redefined specifically for black women. And, and the reason I'm kind of making this distinction is because when we have these conversations, it's from a lens of, of looking at, through the lens of looking, at, at, looking at the issue, excuse me, through the feminist movement that have been often led by white women. So talk to us about, about why that's important for us to note here, that this is black women coming together to talk about reproductive justice instead of saying, okay, this is about, uh, you know, we're bringing all women, quote unquote, to the table. Why, why is that important?
It's important because we have to name that black women, where the, it's actually 12, there are 12 black women, the mothers of reproductive justice actually coined this phrase. And so when we say reproductive justice, we're actually following in the footsteps of our elders um and our leaders who said many years ago, this is not a new phrase for them. They came up with this phrase um in the 90s, over 30 years ago. And it was in response to the idea that, you know, reproductive rights is not enough. And so reproductive justice and this uh idea that our, our elders have taught us is that we not only have a right to decide if we want a baby, but we have a right to decide if we don't want to have a baby. And no matter what that choice is, it also means that we have a reasonable right to breathe clean air. It means that we have a reasonable right to expect a good life, not based on the zip code that you were born in, not based on the socioeconomic class that you were born in. It means that children, if we decide to bear them, have a right to go to a good and clean and fair and equitable and well-supplied school. It means that we have a right to have, that we have a reasonable expectation to live a fully dignified, well-supported um and free life. And so again, uh, black women have taught us and through their feminist lens and their feminist practices that when we talk about this, we are not simply talking about giving birth or not giving birth. We're talking about the quality of our life, not just, not just as women, but for all of us.
Right, right. And that's the, but that's the big thing, I think, Tiffany, that, that we just have, we have to keep in mind that this situation here is, is different for black women. I mean, we can look at the studies and we can see the research when it comes to reproductive health. Um, and I'm talking about when women go into the doctor's office, they're being told much different information than black women. They are being told much different information versus white women when it comes to reproductive health, right? Um, and, and, and we also know that black women are often not taken seriously when they're talking about what is going on. And we also know that black women are often not taken seriously when they're talking about what is going on with their bodies. And you know, either because of childbirth, it might be an unfortunate horrific tragedy, say because of any type of sexual violation, anything like that, that women aren't taken seriously. So can you speak on that as well? Like, how do you strengthen the woman, the black woman's voice? Because it's not just about policy, it's also about being heard.
Absolutely. I mean, there's a viral story that's happened right now to one of our young sisters in Philadelphia. She went to, she's pregnant, she went to the doctor because she's experiencing pain. She tried to give an in-depth explanation of exactly what she was feeling, why she was feeling it. She's, I believe in the story, she said she's seven, going on eight months pregnant. And she was ridiculed, she was mistreated, she was actually manhandled by a nurse. She became afraid and so she taped the interaction and the woman asked her, you know, what did you expect when you became pregnant? Did you think that you were going to be able to live a life for free and not work? And I mean, the levels of disrespect and the trope of the black woman, right? And the disrespect that we feel in the medical industrial complex and these completely unfounded, unscientific misnomers that we somehow feel less pain, you know, and that we are so hypersexualized that these pregnancies that we have, if you don't see us with a partner, that we somehow become pregnant through promiscuity. All of it is wrapped up in racism if we're going to be honest about it. And so when we talk about, you know, you just played a clip before this started about how the totality of the disasters of where this country is heading is so much predicated on racism. And so much of this Roe decision and so much of this fighting that we're doing for our freedoms, for our bodies is also because black women, brown women are having less babies right now. And that is a threat to the system. That is a threat. They sending babies. And what's actually happening is that we're waiting longer to start families, we're getting more educated, we're investing more in our communities, and that creates a threat for this American society, doesn't it?
And I'm so happy, Tiffany, that you brought that up. It's so funny because my wife and I were talking, just literally talking about that this morning in this context when we were looking at the Hispanic population in the United States. And we are finding, and folks, this is real talk, according to the census, we're number three. You know, there are more Latinos and Hispanic members of the citizens in the United States than there are black folks. And, you know, I was like, I asked my wife, I said, why do you think that is? You know, and she was like, well, you know, they always, they have larger families and all of those things. And I said, but you know what? I bet you a part of it is that for, unlike them, black folks, we've been here for so long, we've been exposed to so many different oppressive procedures in hospitals in terms of childbirth. And we have taken in so many different types of medications and we have been experimented on. I bet you that there has been, that has all led to a slowing down of our growth, right? And she was like, yeah, I would agree. I would definitely agree. And now you saying that, and I'm not going, trying to go down this Alice in Wonderland rabbit hole of conspiracies. I'm just trying to, I'm just looking because the black woman's womb is powerful. We all know that, right? And if you can slow down the rate, the birth rate of black women that have often been scrutinized and criticized because, and I remember growing up in the 80s and 90s and hearing adults talking about the fact, and I'm talking about political leaders saying, black women are having too many babies.
Yeah.
So if you're talking about that 30, 40 years ago, we don't think that by 2022, that something hasn't been implemented, that something hasn't been injected, that something hasn't been swallowed or taken in to the bodies, that it's slowing us down. And I think that we should need, we really do need to have a bigger conversation about that because, to your point, sis, like, if we can't produce and black women are choosing to hold back on families, that's certainly your choice that this sister's got, right? That's a different point. But if a sister's saying, I want to have a family, and then find out that her body can't produce, can't hold the egg, or she's having complications, we got to look at, well, what's really going on now with some women that's going to have it? But if the numbers are showing that there's a vast majority of women who are able to produce for whatever reason, then I'm starting to look at, ah, this don't seem right, Tiffany. This don't, this don't, the math ain't mathin'.
Yeah, you know, I mean, there's, I just read earlier this week that, you know, our existence is a predetermined, pre-existing condition. Being born black in America because of the amounts of stress that racism and poverty and disproportionate low income living and disproportionate levels of in-opportunity create in our lives that our actual birth and existence, being a black person in America, becomes a pre-existing condition. And so, I mean, I think the science is starting to science. And I think that's also scary because if you look at actual facts and not opinions and you name the fact that black women's bodies have, this all started, this whole reproductive justice movement started when you could no longer just take a black woman, put babies inside of her and make her property. When you enforce that, when we got here, the state made us do that. We became agents of the state and therefore we became commodities of the state. And so now they don't have that power. And what you're lifting up is the fact that black women, brown women, again, we are the, we are one of the most educated demographics in America. We are the one of the, you know, we're earning more money, we're taking more time, we're being more serious about our health and our priorities in this country does not like that. It just does not like that.
I want to, and to that point, I want to get some feedback from our online culture crew, Tiffany, because folks are checking in and as we have in this conversation, the conversation is certainly bubbling and brewing on our streaming platforms of YouTube and Facebook. Take a look at this, folks. Real Brooklyn, you brought up a point. And, you know, you my guy, and we always, you know, we may not always agree, but this one, I think we need to bring Tiffany in on. Real Brooklyn, you said not having babies is not a threat. Having babies and not raising them properly is more of a threat. Tiffany? What can we say? What can we speak? Because I disagree. I think that if, and I'm saying this because if we look at how population growth inspires the thing, I get the point, I think that's a cultural point, the second point that Real Brooklyn is bringing up and saying not having babies and not being taken care of. But not having babies is a real threat.
Yeah. Unless, I mean, we don't have to get in, I'm not an economist. I am a trained organizer, but what I could say that we know, right, is that capitalism doesn't work as long as there is no lowest lower underclass, right? We know that the country can't work. Like, it's mathematically impossible for everybody to have a job because if everybody had a job, then capitalism wouldn't work. And so unfortunately, I don't, I understand, I think I understand what Red Brooklyn is trying to say about the threat that, you know, children, uncared-for children present in our community. You know, and I understand and have some thoughts about that. But I honestly think that as long as we can be subjugated as a people, I mean, it goes to all sections, right? When you look at the prison industrial complex and the disproportionment of a number of black folks and black men who are in prison. And what does that mean for people being able to vote? Well, then what does that mean for people being able to contribute to their community through being able to be part of ballot measures and other things that provide resources? And so as long as you keep a group of people under everything, you know, in bad living conditions, in underfunded, underopportunities, all the things that we know happen in our communities, then those people are relegated to low-income jobs, low-wage jobs and positions where they're not able to really lift themselves too far out of poverty because not of any work that they have or haven't done, but because of the interlocking systems. And so if the systems aren't working, there always needs to be people in there to stand them back up and reinforce them. If there aren't people there to stand them up, capitalism doesn't work. And that means none of this works. And I think we have to be really, really clear about that.
And I think that, to go back to Real Brooklyn's point and your point, Tiffany, is that, you know, if we're finding this, and this is why we're having a conversation, because just as much as we talking about reproductive health and reproductive justice and women's rights, I think you have to couple that with other elements like family planning. You have to couple it with other understanding, you know, there are courses about family psychology and family counseling. Like, we do have to have a 101 session within our own community about the dynamics, the power, the structure of the family. And, you know, having these conversations, especially with the next generation. Like, you don't, you have to make intentional decisions. And it's still mind-blowing to me that in 2022, Tiffany, that I hear women who say, I didn't expect this to happen. And I'm talking about when they lay down for man, unprotected sex. They're like, I didn't expect this to happen. And it's like, well, what did you?
Well, you know, I don't know what your upbringing was, but I don't find that hard to believe because everybody doesn't get an adequate talk. Like, honestly, everybody's not getting that when you start your period menstrual cycle, whatever you call it, you know, then it's a cycle of X amount of days and these days are the days that you can get pregnant. And this is, and even if the man, you know, pulls out or has on a condom or takes, like, there's always a possibility. Everybody doesn't get taught that, you know, I just, I know black women, I'm 44 years old. I know black women whose talk was, the extent of it was, boys are bad. Don't bring no babies home. Stay away from them. You'll date and have sex when you're grown and out of my house. So I understand what you're saying and I also think we're going to talk about, let's have the talk and let's really have the talk. Because some of our moms didn't get the talk and sex was so taboo and maybe some of them.
I agree with that.
Age moms, you know, and so it was just, it became a conversation about shame as opposed to the physical nature of what happens. And so I agree that we do, we do have a lot of generational unlearning to do. We have a lot of unshaming to do within our families and with each other when it just comes to something as simple as talking about our bodies, right? Not even necessarily sexual intercourse. We didn't even get to pleasure, right? There's a lot.
Tiffany, that's a whole different conversation.
I'm like, I'm going, I'm digging.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're trying to take us, because that's Handmaid's Tale type stuff. And then let me just say this, and this is the second time this week this topic has come up, Tiffany, I'm serious. Like, there has to be a conversation about, you know, the culture that we in where women are having sex either for profit or they having it for pleasure.
Why not both? But why not both? Why not both?
And you can have it for both, but here, you can have it for both, right? But the culture, I think the culture still, if you're having sex to get something from a man, right? The culture is telling us, well, sis, lay down, but get something from him, get that money or get that bill paid or get something from that man. You're, this is just me, I'm not a woman, but what about the choice to be pleased? What about, what about your pleasure? Because you're still, you're still subjugating yourself to a man's whims instead of thinking about the interest. Now, of course, money is a driving force, but sex is not a trend, you know?
I hope everybody's having pleasurable sexual experiences.
And I'm saying, and I'm saying that women aren't, women aren't, studies are showing right now that women aren't having pleasurable sex.
Yeah, that's a shame for them. I hate that for them. I didn't know we were going here, but let's do it.
I'm just making a point that women aren't being valued, like the interest of a woman isn't being valued in a lot of different ways, whether you're talking about reproductive and reproductive, you know, reproductive health. Or when you're talking about just pleasure, women just doing things just for pleasure, the woman's interest is not being considered.
I mean, women is just not being considered, for real, for real. To bring it back, like, if you look at what is happening, there's a lot of issues in, again, in our culture. I don't know if we're having a private family conversation or which way we going, but there's a lot of things for us to talk about in terms of our interpersonal dynamics, how we love each other, how we treat each other, how we are in community with each other, you know? What we're, I honestly, again, I'm 44, I miss when I was younger, my parents used to call other black people brothers and sisters. I grew up hearing that, that, you know, it made, it made community something tangible and identify people as being safe, you know? I think when you're talking about the culture right now and what people are being advised to do or feeling influenced to do, it really does go back to capitalism, right? Because this new age that we're living in and social media and everybody having this very comparative, get rich, get rich quick, I'm going to be this overnight, I'm going to be that overnight. That is, that is not of our doing. And I think to have an honest conversation of what are the ways that we can reclaim, you know, ourselves and reclaim some of these narratives that, again, are capitalist and money-driven and try to put monetary value to people as opposed to what is truly at the heart of the human being. And so there's a lot of conversations that I would love to have. And that is bringing us back to the whole point was why we had the Day Without Us because we wanted to name that, like, when you are talking about these levels of reproductive justice, when you are talking about the totality, right? All of these things, they are all tied together. They are our pleasure, our income, our freedom, our labor, our money, the opportunities that we have. Can use our bodies, the way some of us are forced to use our bodies.
Come on, sis.
Our bodies, it's all tied together. And at the end of the day, you want to be able to live in a country, I want us all to live in a country where we're free to make those decisions without the pressures of capitalism and the Supreme Court telling us that we're not actors.
I agree. I agree. I think we, and throw in a patriarchy, right?
Girl, we not even, see, I'm calling.
Say, girl, I just took Tiffany from guest to the homegirl, yo.
Girl, we are not going there.
I get it. Real talk, I'm on it and I'm humbled. And more importantly, I am with you, you know what I'm saying? Like, there has to be some very, very different conversation because men can gain from this fight, right? When we're talking about reproductive justice, when we're talking about all of these things, black boys in particular, I'm just, I'm saying it, black boys and black men, we don't know en masse. Now, unless you had a father or a mother or parental figure or, you know, adult in your household that really broke this stuff down, the nuances, the things to consider, you know what I'm saying? I have a boy and a girl, I have a son and a daughter, my son is nine, my daughter is three. So now that I'm inundated and talking to people like yourself and I've been blessed to talk to so many others, the conversations is going to be different about sex, about your body, about, you know, for my daughter, her reproductive health, for my son, reproductive justice. Like, the conversations got to be different. You see what I'm saying? Because I know, my father didn't break it down to me like that. He didn't, I mean, I knew what was happening, but there's so many different nuances. There are so many changing and evolving ideas. There are so many different views out there.
And you know what else? Y'all better tap in because we ain't making these babies by ourselves.
Come on, sis. I think y'all have somebody else to help you.
I'm not making a baby by myself. And if they're going to criminalize me, what's going to happen to you? What if we make this decision together that we don't want to start our family right now? So what if you and I get in the car in Texas and try to drive to Delaware? And now we both criminals because we've decided that we want to focus on ourselves and growing our relationship and our finances before we have a baby? Y'all better tap in. Y'all better start thinking about this as an issue with the totality of all of our freedom because we're there. Like, that's not coming, we're there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Tiffany, I got to stop right here. Because, girl, you going to make me go there.
Girl.
Hey, look, 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 I'm, I'm, and the, real talk, I am, I am, uh, you know, I want us, I want you to consider us here at the culture and on the Black Star Network a, a resource. We are having uh, uh, an, an in-house conversation, right? And it is an important one. So my, please, I, I want, I wanna, you know, bring you back on. Let's have some deeper conversations about some of these elements, right? Because this is still a lot of things to consider. There's still like, these are big ticket items, but then there are individual things. But more importantly, you know, now that the day has passed, but the work continues, how should we support the work of Day Without Us?
I'm gonna say, please tap into some of our very, very good sisters in the South who really need our support right now. They're leading really important reproductive justice work, and with all the things that have happened, they never got a break. And they've continued to provide our brothers and our sisters with uh, you know, safe sex, prophylactics, education, abortion care and so on and so forth. So go ahead to our website, daywithoutus.com, take a look at our partners. There's lots and lots and lots of uh, good folks on there, not just Reproductive Justice Orgs, um, sexual violation, uh, such, uh, organizations that deal with survivors issues, organizations that lift up community work, how to donate water in Mississippi. Just tap in. Like I said, like, this is about showing compassion and love and looking out for each other now and as we move forward, because I think we're all very clear on where these people are trying to take us in our communities, in our homes, and most importantly, in this country. So I'm happy to come back, you know, tap me in to talk about black families, tap me in, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I'm a survivor. Tap me in to talk about sexual uh, violence and support and healing. I'm, I'm ready. I want to have all these conversations with you and the family, because we need them. I think you're muted, or maybe you can't hear me.
Muted, there we go. Tiffany Flowers, who is the campaign director, I had to get myself together from all of this. Uh, who is the campaign director for a day without us, folks. Again, here's the website, take a look here. Powerful, powerful group of black women that are deciding to take agency of their own choices, their own bodies, and most importantly, their own, their own uh, conversation about us. And it is a, it is a very, very powerful group. Tiffany, is there some, I know we just had the day, but is there any, you know, either small events that are gonna be happening in, in cities across the country or anything that we need to keep our eyes on?
As of right now, I don't have anything to report back because we've shifted our work to actually election defense and making sure all of our folks can get out to the polls and vote safely and safely drop off your ballots. It's not about a candidate, it's again, it's about your choice and your right to exercise your vote. So if you want to be down with me and do what I'm doing, uh, you can text uh, frontline to three zero four zero three and come get trained up on how to be a de-escalator, how to make sure your auntie and your grandmama and them got some water or some pizza while they wait in long lines, and let's get it done.
Hey, look, uh, we talked to a candidate that's running for the congressional district down in Florida, the twenty-sixth congressional district, Christine Olivoe yesterday. She said that a lot of our people, as a result of Hurricane Ian, communities are destroyed. A lot of black folks may not be able to have, uh, to get to the polls on election day. And there is a concerted effort to keep those black folks from getting to the polls because of where the state governor stands on a lot of these issues. So, you know, if there are, if there are some additional resources that can be handled, or I don't know if there is some uh, context that y'all have out in Florida, we would look, let us know, because I want to make sure that our people in Florida are not forgotten. Um, you know, it's one thing to lose your house, now you gotta think about voting. And this is such a pivotal midterm election year.
Please, oh man, please tap in.
We just don't want that level of, we don't want Mother Nature to be the, to, to be the culprit or become the blame for voter suppression. That's not her fault.
No, check out my man Desmond Mead in Florida, uh, Clean Slate Initiative, that's the good brother that helped all those, all those um, returning citizens restore their rights. They're on the ground down there doing amazing work to try to help um, help our folks out. And I'm, again, I'm happy to come back. I, I will commit to come and back with some resources there. I really will.
That's beautiful. Tiffany Flowers, thank you so much for the great work that you're doing. And more importantly Tiffany, thank you for being so good for the culture.
Thanks for having me. Peace.
Absolutely. All right, folks, man, oh man, I love having these conversations, man. Y'all, my Wednesdays be lit. Uh, but I appreciate the Tiffany, and I appreciate all of our fine guests that came on today to talk to us about the work that they're doing to talk about these issues. Hey, look, if you enjoyed the conversation, make sure y'all hit us up at blackstarnetwork.com. This is why we ask you for your support. This is why black media is so important, so we can have these very, very underadulterated, unfiltered uh, uh, discussions about what's important to us and how these issues impact us the most. So go to our website, download the app for free and sign on, be a part of the Bring the Fun uh, Fan Club. Do what you can to show that you are standing with us uh, as we continue to build this media platform. But look, you're not gonna get these conversations anywhere else. You really aren't. And so it is a blessing that we have this platform, that we can have these discussions that are geared just for us. So go to blackstarnetwork.com. Look, uh, thank y'all so much for tuning in this afternoon. Big shout out to the, to all of y'all that are my online culture crew. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, make sure y'all follow me on all social media platforms. I love to connect with you. Hit me up on Instagram. I need more followers, folks. Y'all know my hacking situation. I got hacked and all that stuff. Now I'm building it back up because I'm connecting with you. Make sure y'all join me at the Real Faraji, also on Twitter at Faraji and on Facebook at Faraji Mohammed. Let's continue to connect, let's continue to build. Uh, thank you for sharing all the tweets and all of the um, the responses, but let's continue to build with one another, all right? Uh, stay tuned. Up next at the six o'clock Eastern Standard Time is RMU, Roland Martin and Filtered with Big Brother Roro. He's always out and about. If you haven't picked up a copy of his book, White Fear yet, woo! Trust and Believe. The ratings on, on the internet for this book is through the roof. People are saying that this book is necessary and important and pivotal at this present time. Make sure y'all pick up a copy of White Fear, and let's continue to support Brother Roland, as he's doing the great work out and about in all parts of the country, all right? As always, never be afraid to challenge what's wrong, stand for what's right while being yourself in the process. God willing, we'll be talking and we'll be back tomorrow for another exciting addition, for another set of great conversations and another opportunity to connect with you right here on the culture, only found here, exclusively here on the Black Star Network. Have a great evening, everyone. Peace.